Meeting in progress.
Oh, great. Why? What? Why? Why can't anything just work? Good thing, Renee.
Yeah.
Has it been saying that?
Yeah.
Okay.
It actually is.
Just continue.
Yeah.
And then it's fully recorded, don't it, even though it says that?
Yeah.
Okay, that's good to know.
Good.
So is it your parents that are in the system living or?
My, my mom is.
Your mom?
Yeah. I don't know, Stacy's parents will ever. Her dad's trying, but he has.
So this is Omar, he's red squirrel.
Sorry. You want my picture to show him?
Can you come with an extension cord for you?
I don't think I need it today.
I probably saw her there, but I doesn't, I don't remember sitting with you and he's talking.
Maybe no one observates the news, it's the same one. Never, no. All right.
And sometimes she said that at certain times they make the applicant report.
All right, let's go ahead. Tuesday, May seventeenth. Six thirty-five. We made our city council meeting, so we'll do a call to order.
Jim Phillips. Jim Richards.
Riley Knight Porst.
Dana Bergner.
Lori Novak.
You have approval of the agenda? We're taking a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to go through the agenda.
Second. We have this other, is that going to be on the agenda too?
Uh, no, we'll talk about that a little bit later.
Okay. I didn't know that was going to be.
It's there, but we'll talk about it later. All those in favor of the agenda, signify by saying aye.
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 Close. Approve. City Council welcomes and encourages participation from community members. Please keep in mind that your comments must be pertinent to city business and must adhere to data privacy rules. I know employees' names may be used, please do not expect action from the council this evening regarding your concerns. We also request that your comments be limited to three minutes, speakers may be recognized only once. This time, we ask that anyone who would like to address the city council, please step up to the podium, state your name and address, and fill out the form provided. Second call for public forum. Third call for public forum. Public forum is six thirty-eight. Everybody here from the sheriff's department. This is resolutions. First one is a. Resolution twenty-two dash oh-two. This is a resolution from the city in support of our Southeast Minnesota regional transportation planning for the creation of a transportation management organization for Southeast Minnesota. So being kind of a spin-off that started initially with the Southeast Minnesota regional training or transportation plan from probably about a year and a half ago when it started. Now it's being developed. And to the point of it's been supported by the. Southeast Minnesota isn't Southeast Minnesota together. And there's a lot of good information in the packet, this is to cover a loving county area. So this is a supportive resolution. Using our American Rescue Plan Act funding. And they were asking for two and a half dollars for each. Per capita, have eighteen hundred and two people, so. It's not a number here in front of me, but it's like. If I remember.
The total?
Thirty-six hundred dollars.
Four thousand five hundred and five dollars.
How much?
Four thousand four five hundred and five dollars.
So I. For discussion, I'll make a motion that we approve resolution twenty-two dash oh-two. Second. By second.
Do we know how much this will cost us?
Four thousand five hundred.
Down, well, after that initial investment, if there's going to be. Further investment to be involved or?
Um, I have not heard of any other. I think the idea is to get it, there's a gentleman organizing it, and, but I don't believe there's. I have not heard any figure, I think it might be self-sustaining, but there may be other funding coming in from Southeast Minnesota together, but I can't tell you that for sure. I think the potential is there to help us with our age-friendly.
Yeah.
Initiative.
Oh, I think it'd be great, I think that's something we've identified that, you know, we do need and a lot of surrounding communities need. I'm just wondering if there's. If you had any idea about, you know, because it does say, you know. Buying the budget, financial plan is needed, but I was just kind of wondering if you had a, an idea.
And it. It might be. So I'm sure my part, it may be self-supported for the users as well.
Sure, sure. So we don't know any of that yet. That's kind of what this is all. Going to be, I suppose, is forming a plan and implementing it.
Any other comments? Saying then all by voice vote.
Aye.
Say aye.
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 Resolutions twenty-two dash twelve. Improving the railways for the Gold Rush.
I'd like to watch and do a through resolution twenty-two dash twelve.
We're over here. What's update your? Seeing other discussion, all those in favor, voice vote.
Aye.
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 Water and sewer. Update from Joe. Anything else you want to touch base on, Joe?
There's a firm on information in terms of the sewer water committee meeting minutes, as well as that update. The director is making good progress at both wastewater treatment facility as well as sewer and water collection improvement. Kind of focused on the areas that I've been kind of talking about. I don't mean to take up the council's time, are there any items that council has questions on, or you want a specific update for?
One of the things that we talked about was mailboxes and then getting information out to people for citizens and. Just kind of wondering where we're at with that, you had mentioned that you were going to re-write some of the language in the letter. So just wondering where we're at with that, and then. Over the weekend, I think all of us received some complaints from, from citizens about the reclaiming and kind of that process of putting the laptop down, so. In kind of updating the group on how those complaint should be handled and, and what the city's responsibility is, what the council's responsibility is, and how, how we should.
So, first question was about the resident update, the resident update goes out approximately every two weeks. So we will. Modify that with the next resident update that gets posted and sent out by email. We continue to get a trickle of people in that sign up for the email resident update, so hopefully that continues. I think it would be good to encourage people to do that via Facebook or whatever we could do.
We were talking about that. Getting the link to however, however you're signing people up for that, putting that on our Facebook page, putting that on the website.
So it's right in the resident notice, it's like the first paragraph in the resident notice that says, if you want to receive this resident notice via email. Send an email to this address. And then I would have their email and I can simply add them to the.
Can you put a link to that on the?
It's on there.
I've also included the newsletter by input as well.
We can put it on the citizens page too, again, I think. Sort of a reminder, I don't know. I, I agree, all the information is out there, it's just.
Right, and so.
Reminding people that it is out there.
We talked about providing, and another thing to mention, you know, the resident notice goes out to everybody, whether you live in. That signs up or that we have any contact, whether you live in River Park or downtown Orinoco or, you know, on West Center Street. And so, that's emailed already, that is emailed, right, and what do we do though? Because not, not everybody. Do email, or not everybody does email. Elderly, there's some elderly people that, that don't, you know, there's some people on First Avenue, said we don't do email, we don't do Facebook. So how, how do we get notified when things are going to happen? We were talking about, one of the previous meetings you had mentioned about putting something together and putting a box in the area or something. Yeah, so there's a bank of temporary mailboxes that people right in the heart of the construction zone get. Right, but people in downtown Orinoco are Cedar Woodlands wouldn't, because they're not impacted by that, or they wouldn't see that, so. So they're getting notices in those temporary mailboxes, is that what you're saying? They will when the next notice goes out. Okay. Next week. Okay. But. Up till now, no, unless Kane, did you put up the temporary mailbox, the contractor can do that within that bank, and I will have them do that. The next Friday when that notice goes out, and we can mark that, but again, that'll just kind of focus within that area where the most construction activity is. People that aren't on the temporary mailboxes. Wouldn't necessarily know that exists, so then the other options would be, you know, if we want to send out. You know, I suppose we could send out mailings. I don't know that city staff necessarily. It takes a lot of effort to send out mailings, but if we could do that. People can walk door to door and deliver them too, but it just takes a lot of time. Right. So. Typically, the avenues that we've used are, you know, people sign up for emails or the Facebook and the websites, and beyond that, you know. Sometimes we do a, a periodic mailing, if that's something that you want to do. You know, I think we've sent out a decent amount of information in terms of the frequently asked questions documents and some of the public hearings documents has, you know, links to the website, my phone number, contact information. That, that is available to people if they want to read and look for it.
How many residents are up there on your street that's up there for West Center?
Oh, gosh. I'd have to look.
Just on, on that end where, where the construction.
Oh, on, on First Avenue?
Yeah, First Avenue.
Oh, there's about fifty, sixty in that whole area. Yeah, but just on, on First Avenue, probably.
You know, I mean. Let me drop off that off at twenty-five, wouldn't be that difficult.
Right.
You know.
Counting the map, it's about twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
That's the whole First Avenue, but, so, Joe, when we do. One of the first things to do when you, like you did the stretch from West End and First Avenue, Ninth Avenue, took all the mailboxes off and put them on a temporary, so. And you're going to put a mailbox out there, I think Kane is, we talked about doing that. So there's a place where you'd put those residents, but that's probably going to be the first thing that would really be brought to people's attention that they're going to be working on the bottom half of First Avenue, Ninth Avenue and.
You also got to remember that we have emailed, you know, we've contacted all of those people, we have sent them the agreements for the, so we have contact information for a good chunk of them. So it's not like we have ten percent of them, we probably have email addresses for seventy-five percent of them. Okay.
No, I was just thinking, I mean, if it's that few, just to go make sure that they have the information on their doorstep or something, that way would be.
And that, that's.
It's not bad.
Yeah. So what, what you're saying is originally they got that info, right? And I think some of the things that I've been hearing from the residency is understanding what's going to happen when. You know, for instance, I had, how many people contact me about the street when the street was being ground up? And it's like, yep, we knew the street was going to be ground up, didn't necessarily know. On what exact day. And with this project, they're not going to know exactly what day things are going to happen, because they could be ahead of schedule or behind, but if there's some way. And we, we were brainstorming to see, you know, is there some way that. We could communicate with them in that area, but if we're going to do that mailbox thing, I think it would be good. Would it be after the fact? Talking about the, the update or. Yeah, every two weeks, we send out a resident update, it's kind of what we've talked about for months. Yeah, so. Within that two weeks, you know, are, is, is there going to be a situation we're going, where we're going to miss? Let's say you're, you're the second, or you're the first week in, and there's not a newsletter come out for another week. And you're moving to a different area, will those people get that? The newsletter looks ahead two weeks. Okay. So, you know, unless contractor does something that they had told us they were going to do, we should have reasonable notice now. You know, that's, if you kind of read through the resident update that talks about all the different areas that are proposed and kind of gives a little bit of a schedule as to. When and where things might be happening, but it's, it's. Yeah.
Well, and I, I understand where you're coming from, that now we're starting to see that there's a concern with the people that are there. And how do we address that, to kind of make it go smoother for the rest of the project?
Right. Right.
And this is coming up, I mean, is, is there another way to do it to, to make it better for. For the people, you know?
Cause I.
That's all I'm, I'm.
Yeah, yeah, you're, you're right, and I, I can tell you, I, one resident, I think, talked to you. They, they contacted you, got the information, because it was supposed to be on the website, and at, at that point, it wasn't there, so that person came down, got. Got the info. Went home, made copies, and then took them up and down the street, you know, in, in that neighborhood. So they understood what was going to happen. So. I, I don't know, I just. I just question if there's a better. To communicate. Sounds like there really is short of taking something right to their door. Unless we let them know that, hey, there's going to be a box wherever your mailboxes end up, there's always going to be a box there, go to that box, and then. Cool.
You tell them how you, yeah, how do you get that information out about the boxes, it's going to be there, so you're still stuck to the same thing. I was just a thought that.
Yeah.
If you did it, you know.
Being it's a small area.
Specifically going through as a small area to, to have it where it works, better and try it.
Yeah.
And see if that doesn't help alleviate some of the issues that are going on.
Right. Yeah. And, and honestly, I mean, we're, we're facing some of the things we are now, I think, just because that's really the first area, right? So. Yeah, you know, there's a. People haven't been through the process before and. Right. You know, once the first neighborhoods kind of see it, then people have a sense of what to expect moving forward. You know, because it's, it really is just focus on one area and leap to the next area, focus on that area and do it all over and over again. That doesn't lessen the impact, it just allows people to. Understand it and see, see the processes from afar until, until it gets closer, so. And they will. People will communicate with other people in the community. Well, I hope that people do sign up for the email list and that, you know, I, I know not everybody gets email, but. Right. Most people do. And that, that should have help, and, you know, and then they, of course, ask, have to take the initiative to read the information and digest it, or call with questions. Yeah. And, you know, I'm not getting many resident calls, which was part of your other question, you said the council's getting contacted a lot, a lot. Typically, that doesn't happen or shouldn't be encouraged, because, one, we want a consistent message. From the most informed people, and, you know, frankly, that's me and my construction staff that are there daily, and it's our job, it's not your job. And so having that consistency and having people, you know, continue. Constantly contact the same group of folks to get that information, I would encourage that, you know, you're certainly free to respond to that, but the more you kind of do that and encourage that. The more it discourages them to contact us directly and to allow us to disseminate the consistent information, typically, that's how it's done.
And the calls that come in the city hall, I'm assuming you and Michelle are transferring or give them Joe's number to call, so.
Yep, and we now have Jeff too, so. And that's what I did over the weekend, I just said I'll pass it along, I, I really didn't partake in any sort of back and forth, because.
With the open house, we really didn't have that many people.
Right, that's what's interesting, that's what's. That's what's interesting, and that is, I agree that that's frustrating, because we, we did. We do give people opportunity to come in and talk to the experts and the people who are working, but.
So maybe that's the other thing we could do is post the, you know, questions or comments or, you know, concerns, questions or concerns, and then put, put the number for the people that can answer those questions.
And then, and maybe we respond that way consistently as a council, you know, just like, here's the email and here's the phone number to. The people who are working on the project.
Yeah. And then, in terms of the response, Renee brought something up, we're, you know, hearing from some people that call, which gives a number, they say, well, but I haven't gotten a call back. How, how quickly do you normally respond, or is there certain hours, so we know? That day. Okay, so. Without exception, as far as I know. Okay. So that's good, I, and I'm asking for the, for the. Understanding of, are there certain hours that you'll call back? You know, will you call just during regular business hours, so if we do get those calls and we give the number, we can say, you know, Joe will call you back during regular business hours, or? Yeah, well, I prefer to call back during, for their business hours, but. They have cell phone numbers, so they are always with us, so. Okay. I do respond to calls over the weekend. Okay. As does Jeff and, and others. And that's good. Might not, you know, there might not be, there won't be people on site unless they're working and doing things. Yeah. But we can always contact the contractor and have them come in, that happened on Saturday. Yeah. With the issue with the patunus chunks being, appearing in the road and being a hazard to drivers, that's kind of been a reoccurring issue. That, you know, the contractor leaves the site on Friday night and thinks everything looks great, and then, you know, Saturday morning, things don't. And so that's, that's a bit of a head-scratcher. Trying to work through that issue. And with that said, I would, I, I, I would push back on some of that. And I agree, that happened, because I came home late on Friday and there was nothing on. Okay. I, see, I, we just, you don't know unless you. Right. There constantly. Exactly. And you see that, so that's. And I would just question it even being, you know, being on the road, because then when it gets graded, and that's a different conversation, but when it gets graded, then it gets graded into the wheel track, if you meet somebody, then it's in the wheel track, but, anyway. So. For my takeaway. We'll get your phone number. In the resident num, notice, yep, and I would maybe even, if you get questions, send them the SE, the FAQ document, as well as the latest resident updates, and say, see this. Number one, see the attached information, number two, sign up for the newsletter, and three, contact Joe if you have questions, Joe or Jeff, if you have questions. Right. And their contact is in the, in, in both documents. But now, let, let's say a Saturday situation, and to me, that's an extraordinary, extraordinary situation. I would assume then, because I called Kane. And in the future, then we should roll that to you, we should call you, let's say that same thing happens. Well, they could call me in on Saturday morning. Okay. And I call the contractor.
And you call the contractor, and they are already out there though, but.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, do you, so let, because I was contacted by residents. So in that situation, do you want us to call you, or do you want us? Because we, we, we can't stop them from contacting us, but, you know, we, we could shuttle that to you, do you want us to say, here's Joe's number, give him a call? Well, in that type of situation where there's a hazard in the road, you probably need to just call me. Yeah. Rather than say, push it off on the resident and give, you know. Yeah, yeah, like I said, that's extraordinary. My, my. Mailbox didn't get put back in the right spot. Yeah. That's different. Okay. That's not, you know. Yeah, I just want to make sure we're, we're all following the same protocol. Yeah.
To cir, then to circle back to the mailboxes, so. You indicated this individual made copies and talked to everybody on.
Yep, she went to everyone, or not, not West Center, but First Ave.
Oh, First Avenue, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So when we. Start working on the lower half of First Avenue or Ninth Street, one of the first things to do is centralize the mailboxes. And there are an extra bucks, there, there's an extra mailbox, so whenever you start doing that, just put the current. Notice in that mailbox and properly identify it, so that should help people get that information, and that, we'll just make that kind of a standard practice. Whenever we do, and go to an area of the west half of West Center Street, you do the same thing, there'd be a mailbox there. And there'd be a copy for those that don't have email access, and let's see how that goes, if that doesn't work, then we'll look at plan B of knocking on the door to door or something, but.
Right.
The mailboxes in the comment last week.
They were asked to, I, I, I assume they did, Kane, do you happen to know? It haven't fell over yet. What was the question?
If they beefed up the mailboxes or fixed, fixed them from the zip tie and.
Still sitting on the cones. Sitting on the. I just came by. Yep. Yeah. And, and another question was packages. And that, that's a fair question, you know, what do we do with FedEx? And. The person who contacted me said, well, I was told them that our package will still come to our house. Well, if your mail isn't, I don't know that your packages will, so I don't know if we have to put a box by the mailboxes or something, because, I mean, in reality, they can't get to their house.
You know, to drop packages on.
So I guess what we typically do is if they can deliver it, they deliver it. Construction changes on a daily basis, whether they can get to the house or not, or want to get to the house or not, the post office is a little different. You know, they are more hands off than some of the other carriers. But I don't think that we want to get in the business of receiving people's packages and trying to disseminate them, that is a bad idea. In my opinion. What really happens there is if they can't get the delivery, that I, I believe they. UPS or whatever, I'll send them a note that says we can't deliver this to your house.
Be in their mailbox.
Get it. Um, you know, and that's, that's kind of just reality, there's gonna be some inconvenience and some disruption to get this work done, and I don't think there's a way around that.
Yeah.
So I can enhance the resident notice, that was one of the other takeaways that I had as well, we'll add something about the. You know, the. UPS FedEx type deliveries to homes. I wouldn't. I guess the takeaway is we can't guarantee that the things are gonna get delivered through mail. Until, until, you know, construction advances and heavy utility work is complete outside of people's houses. But on a given day, you know, it's, it's, there's a fifty fifty chance kind of, you're in that work zone, whether they'll get there or not.
Right.
So.
Yeah, as long, as long as we communicate that. I think we're all right. Communication is, is key.
Yeah, you can put the information out there, but people still have to read it, so that's the other challenge.
That's right.
Comments like that is out there in the FAQ, so. Okay, any other comments before we continue on? All right. So the last item. Or anything else on the infrastructure outside of the stations, why is it?
Yeah, look, they, the station one is in and they're starting to install some force main. Along Sixth Street and then moving south very soon, and then in addition to that, up in First Street Northwest, they're installing. Forest main and water main, actually have a second crew starting up there. So that, that, those pieces are all kind of moving.
You, how long do you think it's gonna take to get it to Ninth Avenue? On the pipe, the piping on First, on First Street Northwest? Just end up to Ninth Avenue, is that two weeks out yet, or?
Yeah, they gotta come back and pull services, individual services to each of the houses for store and water, so there's a, there's. There's some work there yet, and then, of course, they'll start the streets up, cut and rebuilding the street through rock, so. They'll be working in that area for probably. A good two more weeks.
Okay.
Anymore.
Any other comments for Joe?
One other thing, Joe, has someone contacted? And, and I, I know we talked that night about school. And I'm, I'm hoping. That will work itself out. So the, the school bus. Stop up there, has it been communicated that they should go over to Center Street?
My knowledge is the bus routes have not been affected at all, they come up. First and then go overnight and then to Center Street and they can still make that.
So that's not gonna change before the end of the year.
Gonna change before the end of the year, so. There hasn't been any impact to bus routes and won't be before the end of the year, so.
Okay.
The last item is our groundbreaking ceremony. Everybody should go to email this afternoon, if you haven't seen it yet, for next Thursday at ten AM, that'll be out at the. The entrance to the wastewater treatment plant and. Invited this group of course, wetlands, sewer committee. Send Jim Quong, district confirmation with them. Minister of Time Township Charlie Lacy. We find both companies, the Stab and Fitztrail, to join us if they can. And I also reached out to half a dozen of mayors, water city committee members that, over the years have been working on this too. Paper people there and we're gonna have a TV. Coverage as well, hopefully, and. I think it'll be a, not a short, but you know, ten fifteen minute introduction. Of people and comments and Joe's talk to Stab is. Possibly having a tour of the facility, but that's a big question, but that's been requested, so hopefully everybody can make it. I'm guessing ten to. Ten to eleven o'clock at the latest, it all depends, we'll have the, the main portion of it and we got some. Painted, gold painted shovels coming.
Oh, you do?
Well, someplace, we've asked for it.
Yeah, well, I'm working on that too, I didn't know we did, but that's just me.
Harold and, Kane didn't go out by twenty shovels yet, so. So anyway, we'll just have that and hopefully everybody can make it or take time out to make it. There's nothing else, Water and Sewer, you'll see there's a copy of a change order. In the packet and some background and the water sewer. Administration color flooring. Parks and trails. Park speed, there's some notes, minutes right here. Packet that just came out this afternoon and Dana, do you want to talk to any of that about the drainage and sidewalks?
Kind of just an FYI and something we should look for in the future, but. As we. Are trying to change the, you know, gardens and things up, we have master gardeners working with us. This year, they're gonna be just concentrating on the sign. Where our big sign is outside, Vivian Williams is gonna be planting. That replanting that, kind of tearing everything out, replanting and then rain garden too. And we just came, took us around the building and like all the terrible drainage spots we have, that would prevent us really from doing any other. Decent work around this area, the sidewalk out front, is it needed, could we tear it, potentially tear it out? Those were the questions we had.
Volunteers or this, the gardener is gonna take care of around the building, or what do you?
We're not gonna do anything this year because we just don't have, it wouldn't be, so that's the only thing that's going to be done this year, but. Looking at like a three year plan or something like that, that's kind of where we want to address all these other issues that surround the building, so. Yeah, it's in the minutes, but those are the places that we, and Kane's more familiar with what needs to be. Addressed, so like we talked about possible solutions, including Kane. Said he would prefer to just remove the sidewalk and sell green tile away, you know, right away from the building.
Yeah, as a productive meeting and there's a lot of good stuff there in the park, Joe, Kane, do you have anything to comment on?
Yeah, I think if you want to look at drainage around here, we should probably have a professional come in and look at it. And give us, whether that be Joe, or Stan Tech, or a contractor. I understand drainage, but I'm no expert, so. I think it's, within the next year, we should look into some, some fixes around the building. It's a really old building, it's really unique, it's not just a gutter and a downspout at your house, so. I think we just need a little bit more expertise on it.
Kane, did it still, outside faucet?
Yeah.
Corner, or is that done, so that's good. All right. The no mow may proposal.
Right.
Discuss as well.
Yeah, so this is kind of just something that a lot of cities are adopting and it's kind of. We talked about it, you know, we would support our residents if they decided not to mow in the month of May instead of. Weed ordinance, since I don't, I mean, I don't know how often we. Get ornery about that anyway, but we also wanted to support it with the public works and in the, on our parks. Because one, we don't have the staff. Yet, because they're young staff, our seasonal workers don't come on until after May typically, and two, we. There's a lot of work they could be doing instead of mowing in May. So.
But I understand the dead lines and the pollinating.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's just a discussion and the, so the parks committee would like us to adopt that. That.
Policy or.
Policy or, I don't know if it's even a policy, but just it'd be in support of residents and the city not mowing in the month of May.
Any comments?
We're, we're two weeks out, made it this far. It's getting tall, it's getting shaggy. On a dandelion, on weeds.
Does it make it harder to mow if you go another two weeks, you know?
Yeah, it does, we'll have to lift them up all the way and it won't look as neat, but.
I mean. I, yeah, and I think that that's more like a, we leave it up to the. Up to the public works discretion to, you know, if it's, if we have a crazy sunny warm. What May and you need to mow, then you would do it, you know, but.
As I walked through our local park here a couple days ago, when the water was up. And just walking down there, there's a lot of down. Branches and by the time the grass gets tall, and some of those things do need to be picked up, otherwise it'll be damaged, so do you mow your grass as high as you can, or?
Yeah.
Anyway, okay. So, but that's just because there's a lot of trees there, I don't know what, you said you did some work in Calvin Park already, picking branches up and.
I think some of the, the more natural parks, we can wait until June. But some of the areas that are City Hall here, Memorial Field, maybe some of those could be. Looked at next week.
I just had, I had a resident reach out and say, does the city support this, and I said, well, good question, I don't think we wouldn't, but, you know, I don't. Yeah.
I think it's a great policy, it's just a matter of applying it. In a way that's agreeable and workable and whatever. Okay. Public Works. We have a seasonal job hire. Kane, you wanna speak to that?
Yeah, so we had two applicants, one applicant really stuck out, we interviewed him, I believe Lori and Jim did as well. Great guy. I'd love to have him.
From a personal committee standpoint, we had a great interview and would recommend the city. To. Bring him on as a seasonal employee, and I know that the background check also was completed on this person, so.
And when would this person be able to start?
Well, he's retired, so he could potentially start. Soon as possible. Before June sixth, potentially, June sixth is when the high school students will be.
Okay.
On board.
So I will make a motion to approve the seasonal hire. I don't have a hourly rate.
It's, it's sixteen dollars an hour, twenty five hours a week, up to five hundred hours for the season.
I'll second that. Any other comments or questions for Kane? Say none, all those in favor of hiring new seasonal employees, signify by saying aye.
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 Same sign approved.
I'll give him a buzz line, yeah. And then my next item there is, we're just looking at buying another A gravel for our Bobcat, it's one. The one tool we really don't have for it, so it'd be a time saver.
So it says up to thirty five hundred dollars.
Big claw that picks up brush and debris and.
We'll get a lot of use out of it.
Well, for sure.
So it's up to thirty five, what do you think it's gonna cost?
Well, there's some used options out there that could be a little less, there's always the auctions we could look at. I would almost prefer that we buy a, a certain brand. I don't need to say the names, but just because of the compatibility with our machine and, and their uniqueness to our machine. There's twenty different manufacturers out there and. If I find a good deal for less than that thirty five, I'm gonna fit on under.
I'll make a motion that we approve. Purchase of a gravel bucket for the Bobcat, two thirty five hundred dollars.
Just, just kind of curious on that, was that in our budget for this year that came for them?
He has an equipment budget.
Yep, there is, there is, the parks has an equipment budget and. Our shop has an equipment budget. Public Works has Streets and Roads has equipment budget, so it could be split up between different budgets if need be, but. Mostly it'll be used in the parks, so there's money to cover it.
Did you second him?
No, I'll do a second then, I just was curious about that, so.
Any other comments? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close him sign, it's approved.
Thank you.
Gold Rush is next. Everything is progressing, everything is. Going to be on the west side of Minnesota Avenue, the fourth, from West Center Street to Fourth Street. And starting to talk to all of our suppliers for supporting that event and. We're also assigning vendor contracts or vendor lots as well, Joanne's doing that, so. Getting a little nervous about the ice person I've. Been trying since last week to get a hold of that person from last year, so I, we may have to. See if there's some alternatives out there if I can't make contact, and so. We've been a trailer and we bring in.
Costco would probably be the most.
We, the ice is out there cheaper than what we buy, it's not having a trailer to keep it. So that's the challenge. I have some, because I know like Gas and Go and Casey's, they get their ice from somebody, so it's just a matter of. Making sure, because our guys comes up to Casey's, there's a different ice manufacturer that comes to Gas and Go, so. Try and work through those details, but that's, that's one of the first. What are we gonna do? Other than that. Thanks for moving along and trying to get busy here in June and July, so. Next item is. Zone Personnel Committee. Did you ever, Dana? What we need to do tonight, if anything?
Um, so. Um, I'll, I'll start by saying that. Um, I was able to speak with the potential hire for the interim city administrator this morning. And she is not, does not want to sign a employment agreement contract with the city for various reasons, which is. You know, obviously that's her prerogative and that's okay. So in kind of working through the situation with the labor attorneys and with Mike. I think we, we kind of have three different options that I, I feel like we have on the table right now. The labor attorneys really strongly recommend that we don't go into a situation where we bring on a contracted. Independent contractor for an interim city administrator role, there's too much risk to the city by bringing this person on. As a contractor, when in. All reality, they would be working as a employee, they would be coming in during the hours that we want them here, they would be doing administrative work. They would be using city equipment, there are. Things that would make them employees versus a true contractor, which puts the city at risk of being sued, so. Number one, council could say, you know what, we accept the risk and we want to hire her in as a contractor in this role. We're, we're gonna bypass what the attorneys say, that's an option. Second option is that we go back to the drawing table and we continue our search and we. Make it clear to whoever we are working with in this search. That we will only enter into a employee agreement with this person. That's another option on the table, the other option is we could. Check with this candidate to see if we could bring her. check with this candidate to see if we could bring her in as a contractor. Really, not in the capacity of a city administrator, um but more as a consultant for the city to help us figure out what we need. Um you know, at this point, one of the comments that she made to me is you don't you don't really want me to come in as a city administrator because you don't even have a job description for a city administrator. We don't know what we really need and so the fact that we're trying to bring someone in as an interim is a little bit it it's just a little difficult. So we could bring her in as a consultant or someone else. It doesn't even have to be her. We could bring someone else in as a consultant to help get us on track and and figure out what position it is that we really need, help. Um you know, guide the city to a better place. Or we could say, you know what, we're not having any luck in the capacity that we are right now. Let's just post for this position. And and see if we can bring someone in that way. Um I I will say that Jim and I have spent countless hours on this. Lots and lots of phone conversations, lots of time with the the attorneys, um lots and lots of time with trying to bring people into this position. I my personal feeling on it is um I would love to, whether it's with this candidate or someone else, I would love to to go the direction of the consultant. Because I really do feel like that's what we're missing. We don't have that description. We don't know what we're missing right now of for for the position. But that's just that's just my opinion. Um and I don't want, you know, I I want what's best for the city and what's best for our city staff. The the current staff that we have are are definitely taking on more work and spending, you know, a lot of time doing things that aren't necessarily part of their daily assignments if we had a full full set of hands here, so. Um that's the direction that I would probably choose to go. Now, that being said, that might not be an option. Next month, we may come back together. Two weeks from now, we may come together. And I may not have any better news for you. We may not find the person that we're looking for, so. I would love to have some discussion from the group, but that's consensus from, I think, where we're both at.
Yeah, and this this person comes with a ton of experience, many, many years of experience. This is what she does is goes in the city that she's at right now.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, they were faced with the same situation that we're faced with, but they lost all their staff. So she came in. They didn't close the doors one day and she took over and kept things kept things on flow.
I think the way you're looking at it as a consultant and ever come and evaluate what goes on is to me the the wise thing to do. Um and just see what she comes up with. And she might have a whole lot more than what we're even realizing right now. Um so if if it was my choice, I'd go along with what your recommendation is to go that direction if she'd be willing.
And I will say um i- if if we go that direction, it may open up more pathways from the twenty people that I've already contacted that couldn't come in and do the city administrator because of time or distance. There may be more people out there that would come in as a consultant and be able to to come up with a plan for us, so while I I had a a great experience talking with her. I think she would have been a perfect person to come in and take on that interim role. I also want to leave the door open that if that's the direction we go. We're not tied to one person at this point, and I think that's important.
Is that person available to do a consultant? Would she do a consultant?
I don't know. I I don't know.
I mean, we pretty much came up with that today. So that's not something that's been discussed, so.
Well, I'm just thinking this this person that you had, I know you were pretty um happy with everything that 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 she had. And with the experience that she's got, it almost makes sense to have somebody like that, if not her. That it sounds like that would be the direction to go and she's open to do it.
Yeah, we don't know if she is.
No, no, I mean, but for the other part of it, maybe, you know, to come with a some type of a compromise that that might make sense for that, so.
Right, here's what I would advise. Nico and his attorney client privileged communication wasn't, didn't have that in mind because that is something we came up with afterward. And he said, for the purposes of tonight's meeting, he recommends that the city council consider the personnel committee's recommended candidate and authorizes the personnel committee to negotiate with the candidate further before the city takes, city council takes further action. So, you know, he wrote that not thinking about a, you know, a different role than interim city administrator or interim city clerk. So, and then I asked him the question, well legally, can you even do a non-employment agreement, do a contractor's agreement with her for different types of services? And the answer to that is it just depends on what the services are. I mean, you're not giving him a lot to go on when you say, well, it's contractor to just kind of look at things in the city. So and his his real answer was, yeah, you can do that as long as it's not, you know, there's an objective legal standard that he goes through in the the communications and as long as you're not fitting things into what would be an employment relationship. You know, what the law says is, you know, the cities we represent get sued on this basis sometimes. Is you you it doesn't matter what you call somebody. It matters what they actually do, what their job actually is. And the label that you put on it is really not really relevant at all. Um so in concept, this could work, but it would take a couple of things. It would take determining, I mean, you have to tell her what her job role would be too. It's not just about the law. It's about communicating with this person that you, you know, you know, what your expectations would be, what her role would be, what you're asking her to do. And I'm not clear in my mind, I mean, we came up with this three hours ago, so I'm not in clear in my mind what that would exactly be, that would exactly entail, but so what you could do is you know, and like you said, she might not even be interested um really in working for an Oco at all anymore or in a different capacity than an interim administrator clerk role, so.
That's the question I have. I I like your recommendation, but I I guess I'm just kind of hit the point about hiring a consultant, but it's also is this person going to be doing payroll?
Well, no.
Strictly consultant, still not helping really with the city staff work.
So. No, um what what I would hope that we could figure out is I I have a a task list that I pulled from Jerelyn's former job description. She she gave us a job description that had all of these things in it. Making this number up, it's close, probably a hundred and seventy things are on that task list. I went through and made a spreadsheet for my own personal use to say what are these things? How many of them are administrative? How many of them are financial? How many of them um are HR type type roles? And then what do they benefit? Who needs them? How often do they need to be done? I need someone to look at that list and say this is irrelevant. This doesn't need to be done. This needs to be done every single week by who? And this is who needs it? I need someone to take those those types of jobs and pluck away at the weeds and then give us the flowers and say, this is this is what you need and and this is the type of person that you need to come in and fill this job. Like at this point, we don't know. We we were told for the last two years that we need a city administrator, like Jerelyn had been telling us, you need a city administrator. I need to be promoted to a city administrator. There's way too much here where I need to do this. But but at the end of the day, I can't, I can't take what she said and put it into action without completely understanding what the difference between a city administrator role would be doing and what she was doing. Um city administrators are making a lot more money than what a city clerk is making. So if we're gonna pay someone a lot of money, I mean, six figures to come in and do that job. I can't I can't in good faith recommend to the city that we do that without understanding how it's gonna impact us, because the other piece that Jerelyn was telling us was that she was overworked and that it was too much for one person. So if we're gonna give that task list to a city administrator now it and it and it really has to be done and all of that has to get done every day or every week. There's no possible way we're gonna bring someone in and get that done. But I don't work for the city. And you, none of us can go in and do that job, so we have to find someone to help us figure out what we need and that's in my head, when we talked about hiring an interim, that's where I thought we were going, where we would have someone come in and they would kind of get us down to the nitty gritty of this is what we need and that's where I that's where I'm coming in with the the consultant who has been in that role and and she she or or they, whoever the person may be, may come in and say oh, you're totally fine having a city clerk. What you really need is a finance person. You don't, you don't need, y- y- you don't need an administrator.
No, I I don't think we can go in as administrator the way the charter is with the city without going up and and have that load through the city. So you can't have an administrator the way we said.
Yeah, I mean, I think if you were, this was always an interim. If you were ever gonna hire, uh change your structure to have it admin, that would be a change in structure.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
You're not a charter city, you're a statutory city, but you you look at your city code and your administration section. There's like a definition of a city clerk and there's a definition of a public works, but there's no definition for. Yeah, I think this that's just a misunderstanding. I think it's always been understood that if you were gonna change to an administrator city, you would have to, there's legal steps you would have to take to do that. I mean, we're not even at that point yet.
So that's why I'm saying what Geraldine's saying that she should be that. I'm going, no, it doesn't fit in her charter of what we need to be as a city.
Well, right, and so I guess my overall comment, what Lori's saying is there's, and it relates to Ryan's question. You know, if you wanna hire somebody to actually do work at City Hall, just like be here three days a week, four days a week and just crank out a bunch of work, the labor attorney's opinion is you have to hire that person as an employee and this particular candidate is refusing, I don't know if refusing, but she doesn't wanna do that, I'll put it that way. And she doesn't wanna do that. She wants to be a contractor for beneficial reasons for her, but that presents risk to the city if you do that. He's, I'm not, I could just summarize it by saying there's risks. You can go read the the analysis of why there's risks or or what they are, so. You know, and then I would say to your point, and we didn't really discuss this, but I think there's other ways to do to accomplish it. I think there's like consulting firms that come in and look at that spreadsheet and say, here's what we advise. I mean, hiring this particular person to do that, I mean, if that's what you wanna do, that's really a different. It's fine. I'm not against it at all. I, you know, I think that's a fine thing to do. I I just think that's a different task than what Ryan was talking about. Ryan was talking about getting somebody in here to crank out the work.
So so.
And that wouldn't be that. That would be something different, so.
So Renee, how are we doing right now with your workload on what's going on and what's happening with the city? Is anything falling between the cracks? That you know of or?
Most of it's getting done. There's a few things that are coming up that I'm not quite sure how to do, so I'm still figuring those out, but.
And and I know there is. I just, are are we, are we sinking? Are we in quicksand or or where are we at? Then maybe we might need to go with figure out something with this lady now. You know, to to see what there is in the meantime and then in the process of that hiring consultant too, to see which is what makes sense, or she might be able to tell us what makes sense too, if she's working that way. And take the risk, I don't know, that's.
I'm confused about how the consultant wouldn't, we wouldn't assume risk if we had a consultant versus if we.
That's, it's really complicated. It's in that. Did you read those emails?
Yeah, so that's why I'm saying that it's almost seems like now we're taking and the other, the advice again, like the firm advised against doing this, but now we're considering taking it to hire consultants. And so where does that, how do we do this? I guess I don't understand. I I'm confused about.
So the nature of whether you have to be a consultant or a employee depends on the job duties and the type of job it is. And so I think what Lori's saying is if you you take these attorney's advice, you can't hire a, you know, a city staff person to just be here. That's an employment agreement. You can get in trouble with like the government by not paying withholding taxes, which is why this probably woman probably wants to be a contractor so she can get more money. Um but that, you know, it's just like you're any other employee, you're a Mayo Clinic or anybody. You can't hire people in the wrong classification and and treat them a certain way when they're really not that thing. And there's objective standards for that. So what Lori is saying here in a nutshell, I think, is okay, we accept that legal analysis. That's the the structure, the way the law is. We're not, can't change the way the law is. But what we can do is hire this person for a different job title, so that she's not a city staff person. She's simply a a professional consultant to get to, like, you hire her for something like, we haven't discussed it, but to review the spreadsheet, interview the staff people and create a memo to council with your recommendations on what the staffing should be. That's what she's saying, which which does not solve the problem of quicksand at City Hall at all.
And then, but it also says too that we wouldn't that they would not answer to counsel, so that, I mean.
So yeah, if we, if they come in as a consultant, it's just like Joe or Mike. Their contract, they're they're contractors for the 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 city and they're not treated as employees. We can't.
They don't get vacation.
They don't get. For example, if you schedule a special city council meeting, you call me and say, Mike, come or Joe, we can say no. Um if you schedule that same meeting and it's an employee, they can't say no unless they had previous, you know, pursuant to their employee manual, they had previously scheduled vacation, whatever your rules are. So and there's other factors. It's not, it's not, you know, you can read those factors in the memo, but they, I mean, it it's just hard. I mean, I talked to Nico. We tried to make this work this afternoon, but it's just hard to you know, you're hiring somebody to be here thirty hours a week and do all your staff work. That's just an employment agreement.
Do you have any idea how long something like this would take?
Really, because we don't know what we don't know at this point, right? But our our thought was, you know, if we could get whoever it is to come in, you know, initially to come in and balance the workload, look at it and say, based on my experience, you get this, you get this, and you get this, and we're gonna continue to keep the wheels on the bus, but at the in parallel, you're gonna post the job, hire it, and I'll help in that process and help train that person in terms of whatever needs to be trained um and help train the staff because we're balancing the workload, because we know there was deficiencies in training. So there there's, it's really parallel paths. It's come here, help us out for the short term, fill that gap, cause we're in quicksand, and then help us bring another person and onboard them.
Well, you can't do the quicksand part. It'd be an employment agreement.
Right.
And this woman, and she's not willing to seemingly sign an employment.
What about hiring it? And and this is a question that completely might not even be feasible, but is is it possible that, are there temp agencies that hire out? You know, can can we as a city hire a temp to come in and do some of the work?
There's other options.
Right, so like, even if we, so we hire the consult, I like that idea. I think needed desperately, I think. I think even if Jerelyn were still here, that would have been a good idea. I do. I just think it's something we need. And in the meantime, could, you know, could we do that? And could we hire a temp person to help fulfill the duties of our?
I mean, here's the problem. This is really the problem. I asked Lori a bunch of these questions. I didn't chat to Jim, but he's probably, I could have asked him too. The problem is the the temp to do what? Like, there's no, there's no temp agency for city administrators.
Also, for instance, our budgets, you know, our budget. So is there is there people, are there people who, you know, that would be able to help us before budget audit? All these, all these things that are going on behind the scenes that we don't see that are happening.
Well, there very well might be, like, you could hire out an accounting firm to do your. Well, there very well might be like, you could hire out an accounting firm to do your payroll and your. Et cetera. Like, I mean, I recommended that you contract with Stan Tech for zoning issues because I just said, you need somebody to help with that.
Which we've done.
Correct. And like, but you, I think what you're saying is find more people like that. Like, look at the, look at the gaps at City Hall and say, we're gonna hire more consultants, but. Yeah, I mean, the, the real problem with this is you didn't get many people. I mean, you're kind of geographically where you're, you are here in Orinoco. You know, there might be a perfectly qualified person up in Fergus Falls. But they just don't live here, you know? And so you're always, this is the disadvantage of being in that rural city's face. You're just always. Struggling to find, you know, and you're looking for people who have the experience. Who are willing to come to Orinoco or live within seventy-five miles of Orinoco. I mean, it's a subset within a subset and then we've got somebody and then. There's just this kind of weird thing with this employment agreement. So. Yeah, you can look at all that. The real problem, I, I mean, it's, I think. Lori's done a good job, Jim's done a good job of looking at this and kind of analyzing it. It's just, there's no real good solution here.
So you've talked to Mike Bani at all? What was his recommendations? Can he help us identify somebody for the. Taking care of the payroll.
Um, no, he didn't have any recommendations for helping. Um. He thought hiring a city administrator was where we needed to go. He also thought we probably needed a city. Treasurer clerk, treasurer separate from whoever we bring in. Um. You know, to be honest, it's the job market. It's, it's an employee's world out there. Um, and so there isn't a lot of. Just not a lot of candidates. There's, there's, there's quite a few postings on League of Minnesota Cities for city administrators, v clerk, um, treasurer. It's, it's a, it's a tough, it's a tough world.
I mean, you just can't go to a temp agency and say, give me somebody. It just doesn't work that way.
Well, I think you could maybe go to a temp agency to just do basic work, like office work. You know what I mean? Like. If you need people to run your election system, you know, you need somebody who's trained in that. Like the, even the clerks go to a lot of specialized training to get that knowledge to. Able to notice the elections and, you know, do all that stuff. So like, there's just certain. Bread and butter. I mean, some stuff, yes, to answer your question. Some stuff is just like, you know, I don't really know. You know, and it's not, you're not like really only city. I know that two cities I represented hired. Uh, new administrators and it was hard. I mean, they had to do. You know, recently one of them and then a year ago, another one, a year and a half ago. And, and there's just, it's just. To get the candidates and you have to pay, they all both had to pay more and solicit and, you know. So that's just, there's not a lot we, the labor attorneys can do to solve that, that one. I mean, that's just kind of what it is, I think.
So Andrew, um, from the accounting firm, um, we had a really great conversation with him. And I think he's kind of feeling the same way as Mike Boni, like we could definitely hire an administrator. They, they cannot touch any of our payroll or any of, of that because they also do our audit. Um, they just wanna have some separation there to make sure that everything is clean. Um, which we respected and, and really I don't, you know, after we went through payroll this last time. Um, Renee did a fantastic job. I, I mean, I don't think that's as big of an issue as what we initially probably thought it was. Um, for the amount of checks that are coming out, but. Things that, that have probably been swept under the rug are paying bills. And it wasn't, Renee isn't sweeping them under the rug. She's trying to get us caught up. Um, but just. Were, they were months and months behind on having, having bills paid. And so. You know, we. So she's, she's catching everything back up, but you know, the. The, the task at hand is why are we so backed up? What is taking so much time that, that, oh, that created the situation where? The clerk didn't have time to get that done. And I mean, we, we've known, right? I mean, she's told us. I, I'm, I have too much to do. I don't, I can't take care of all of this. But now we're in a situation where we don't have her and we're still trying to sift through the whys and.
That's where the consultant.
That's, that's where either we, we need to get, you know, hire someone in today, which that's not happening.
I agree. I think the consultant is, if there's a. This is kind of the opposite of a perfect storm, but the point is, this is really the time we need to look at the direction report Orinoco wants to go. With our staff. And I think hiring a consultant would definitely. Give us that direction. Do we need administrator? Do we need administrator clerk? A part-time finance director, whatever the case may be. It sounds like a consult would help us. Would give us those directions.
Yeah, I think we would have recommended that. I think we were just doing this step by step and the step one was hire an interim so that the quicksand stops. And then the step two would be to advise you on this, the multiple steps to fix this. One of which would have been to hire either a firm or independent person to do a consulting thing, amend your city code, you know? Well, we can't amend the city code until you know that you want an administrator, which you don't really even know yet. So there's just a lot to do here. So it's not like. You know, I, I, I don't think anybody thinks this, but neither Flirty Hood nor the Personnel Committee can just snap their fingers and have a solution to something like this. Like. It's, it's more involved in that and.
So what do we need from us? We just, tonight, we just say, you know, continue, we, that we direct the personnel committee to continue.
Personnel recommendations coming back to us.
Yeah. So Lori gave the good, you wanna say them again, the options.
Yeah. I mean, I think if, if, if we can continue down this path, um. Whether it's finding an interim that is willing to sign an employment agreement. Or if we can find a consultant, um, to, to come in, even if it's just a few days to come in and. And spend some time here to see what we need. Or maybe it's this person that we found that can come in for a few days as a consultant and then say, maybe she was. I agree. I want to come in as an interim. I see, I see what's going on here and I think I could, I could do this. I mean. Just having that direction.
I think so too. That, that's, that's the best idea, I think, if we could.
Having the direction from counsel to say, you know. We're gonna continue pursuing. If we do, I think that what Mike and I talked about, if we do figure out a consultant. That. Mike, does that need to come back to, to counsel? If we agree on a consultant? How, how is that?
So, and this gets into what is the Personnel Committee's authority? Which is a little bit of a gray area for us lawyers. You know, the way you've all set this up in the city is. Unique and it's not, it's not as clear what the authority is for like just Lori or Jim or combined to just go. Do the negotiations. So I think that has to come back to counsel. Here's what I would propose. So essentially what I'm hearing is, look. There's, you know, you would hire an interim clerk administrator right now if that person existed, but really the only person. That fits the bill. I mean, you've done due diligence. They've done a lot of work on this. So. And the only person is, well, is there, just, we can't come to terms at least yet. Cause I also would think that maybe, you know, if we sit down with this candidate, she might reconsider the employment agreement. That's still possible, I think, based on what you said. Um, and I haven't been personally involved with any of this. I just got involved today, basically. So. What I would recommend, and I think, would the council still be open to that if she were willing to change her mind on the, um, employment agreement and would be, come in as an interim? Okay, I figured. So I think that the motion should be. That you direct the Personnel Committee to, and authorize the Personnel Committee to. Conduct further negotiations with the candidate in question, either for a consultant agreement or for a. Interim administrator clerk agreement or both. Um, and then bring back, you know, if you can come to some sort of negotiated, general negotiation to bring that back to council, possibly a special meeting. But does that make sense? So it'd be a motion to authorize the Personnel Committee to continue to negotiate with candidate further. On either a employment agreement or a contractor agreement.
But, but I don't want to exclude the options of other people.
So if we can get somebody that will come in as an interim or even an interim to hire. Let them try it out, but you know.
Yeah. And to continue those same negotiations with other people. Yeah, that's goes without saying. I think that's a reasonable motion. You're not really obligating the city to anything. And anything that's officially obligates the city, you'll have to bring back at a later time. I think that's reasonable. That's all you can really, I mean. That's basically what you can do at this point anyway.
And my only concern is that we don't lose. I like the idea of the consultant and potentially interim administrator, but. I still like to keep those things kind of semi-separate. Because we wanna take advantage of the consultant to give us an idea how we should look with our staff. And I do, I do think that if we decide to take the consultant's approach and recommendations. We don't know what that is yet. And that's why I'm kind of thinking that should become a standalone. There's options after the consultant gives us the recommendations. And then we can decide if, more if this person's interested or does the council wanna go out for other. Applicants, because the consultant would have given us such, pretty much a pattern of what we're looking for. And I don't want. The consultant influenced impact hiring that specific person. Versus giving us the option of, yes, we've taken the consultant's practice and now we're gonna go up. Publicly and see if we can find either a city administrator or administrator clerk or whatever comes out of this task list. And what the consultant says. I don't wanna tie those two, I don't wanna tie the consultant and hiring her. This person is a. Interim administrator and then this person decides, no, that's not what I wanna do. Then we have to start over again. If that makes sense.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think we would still, wouldn't we still want that consultant? To be part of our interview process. For identifying the right candidate. That was my thought because you would have someone coming in with all that experience and know-how to be able to identify well. And he, cause like Lori said. You know, we, we have day jobs. You know, we're volunteers. We're not necessarily going to know who's going, who would be a great administrator. But someone in that role would be able to identify. Yep. I think that person has what it takes.
I'm just wondering right now too, um, where's the priority on what, what we're looking at if we're getting into the quicksand? Do we wanna solve that issue first, a quicksand? And then look at a consultant or whatever else afterwards, but you know, um.
I think that's what got us into the situation we're in. I just keep thinking we're gonna keep digging, digging and digging until we get. I think it needs, we, we desperately need a structure.
Yeah, I mean.
An overhaul in that area. And I think. None of us knew how badly we needed it until it just, until we got to where we are now. So.
I asked Lori, I mean, it just seems to me, this is my outsider opinion, but it seems like Lori and Jim have used best efforts to find whoever there is out there. I mean, if you keep, both to keep looking for a, the quicksand fill, I don't, I'm not sure that person exists. You know, beyond what they've already done. I mean, they've already spent a lot of time on this, it seems.
Well, and that's, that's why I go back to the, if we, if we focus our effort on finding a consultant. Um, and, and honestly, through the people that I have already connected with. That said, I can't do this as an interim. I don't have enough days in the week or I'm going on vacation this summer and I can't commit. There may be. A multitude of people that we could bring in to help us for a short term. Or maybe even just as a short-term employee to say, yeah, I'll come in as a short-term. Not an interim, like a short-term employee to, to come help with some of the tasks and, and give you my best. Um, answers as to what it is that the city needs. I mean, I think that's the other end of it is that. We're saying, I'm looking for an interim and I need you here tomorrow and I don't know how long this position is gonna last. That's different than if I say. Can you help us create a structure and figure out what it is that we need to do? And maybe it's, you know, just a, a few weeks of time or a few days, a, a, a few weeks.
Maybe it's two days a week versus asking for three, but maybe that person. Would say, okay, I can't do it for three, but I can do it for two days a week, you know?
I like the idea of. Changing our needs or changing, cause you've done that work. You've looked and. So it sounds to me like we need to change our requirements or our needs for right now and. And it'll open doors for us. And then, uh, cause I, all I keep thinking is if we, if we get this. We get our structure down and we get really organized and really, really understand what it is we need. We'll be able to, that, that will be actually good when we go out and recruit and say, we've done this work. So that, because I don't, I don't know how it works, but I would imagine. That word gets around that. We might not be set up great or, you know what I mean? So I'm sure people who would, they talk, people when they apply for jobs, talk to people, what would you think about working here? What would you, you know? So we could bring that to the hiring table when we're ready again to. To look for that specific spot. Say, we have done this work. We are set. We are, we will onboard you. We will train you. I don't know if we could have said, said that before. So I like this. I like the consultant's idea. I would.
So could we? Can't make any decisions, not other than just suggesting the Personnel Committee come back to council with what you've heard the consensus here of. Of a, some type of consultant slash interim possibility. Whether it's a special meeting, which would be good if we could just keep it moving. Cause I think we just, we don't know what we don't know. We may find out we just need a. City administrator and another. Part-time clerk, you know? I don't know what that answer is, but the point is, we don't know. So if you wanna come back to us. With your recommendations working with, um.
You open to a special council meeting if we need, if something's going on so that we can move it.
Okay, any other comments? Otherwise we'll. Go the next time. So we're looking at a. Personnel committee is looking at a temporary. Temporary pay increase for the deputy clerk. You wanna speak to that? Thoughts are?
Yeah, um, actually Ryland and I talked about this, um, just a little bit. Um, something that we did in the past, um, you know, as we've been talking about, Renee's had to, um, step up. And do things that she hadn't normally been doing, um, and, and really dive in with both feet. You know, I don't know what that looks like or if Ryland, if you had any, um, you know, ideas in your head.
Well, there's from our. Pay structure, there's. Deputy clerk and, and a city clerk treasurer, there's quite a gap. So that's not really an issue. I think that's, I think, um. I don't know if you wanna talk about figures. I can throw out something for discussion. Like a dollar an hour, a dollar a quarter. Um, I think. No doubt what she's. Have been doing now, even though it's been a couple of weeks now, but the point is, it's gonna be more time before we actually get somebody in that can. Take those responsibilities that, that they're officially assigned to. So.
One thing I'll mention, Ryland, as you say this, just so the rest of the council understands. I guess why we would do this would be. Even in, in bigger companies. If your job description changes enough or you're outside of your duties for a period of time. That this increasing their pay can happen based on. Based on those added responsibilities while they're there. Then they can shift back once the responsibility. Then they can shift back once the responsibilities are readjusted, so.
You know what, in the past, when we did give a pay increase, yeah, I don't remember going back to the original pay either.
You're not going to go backwards. I don't, that wouldn't work too well.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I would prefer to take the temporary part off and just. Go with the pay increase. I think that would just be.
And, and I, I mean, pay outside of it, um, you know, Renee. You're doing a really great job. Um, we appreciate you. We know this has been a lot on, on you personally. Um, Michelle's not here. Michelle has been just doing a great job. She's, you know, a newer employee for the city. And, um, both of you are, are really appreciated and, um. You know, words. Words mean something, but money talks a little louder. So if we can do that, I think. As a council, it, it would help to show our gratitude even, even more.
Yeah, and I would say we would have to. Need to be fair and equitable to look at Michelle as, as things ramp up as well. Because we may even. Want Michelle to pick up additional hours as we start to balance this if you. So if we get a consultant in and they start balancing based on task list. We will likely have to, have to look at this for, for Michelle as well.
I would, um, I'd recommend. February talking about the increase, I'll just go ahead and make a motion. I'd recommend that we, uh, grant Renee. Or the exceptional she's doing today as well as continuing on with the added responsibility with the five percent increase. She's about a dollar a quarter or something like that, so.
I'll second that motion.
Is there a second? Discussion, I'm sorry, in discussion.
So just for the record then, it's not temporary.
And also in that motion too, can you leave it open for Michelle? That she be looked at as time goes along. Also, or do you want to make as a separate motion?
Well, I think that's really up to the personnel committee to bring back to us, maybe at the next meeting. I, I mean, it's not on the agenda this time. Yeah, and you had a meeting tonight. And so I think, I think that that's a great. I, I think we should look at it, but I think we need more, we would, before that, we would probably need some more information from the personnel committee and a rec, and a formal recommendation. I would, I would prefer that, but I do agree and I, I, I mean, I think, you know, I know she was hired as a part-time person, but if there's ever. If she was.
Just picking up the newsletter.
Right, yep. And if there's more, you know, so, yeah, but we'll leave that up to you guys because you don't have enough to do.
Any comments, discussion? And we'll make that affect you. If we can make it better active. To May fourth. I'll add that amendment to the motion. Seeing, uh, no other discussions. Favor, signify by saying aye. Oh, same sign, it's approved. Next is a. Leave Minnesota City's insurance trust question that, uh. We put in the folder. And the question is, the options to pick. So. We talked about this, I went back and looked at my notes when we were. Bill came in back in February. They run it from, um, June to July to June, so it kind of affects both budgets, but. Back in February, we talked about this, I did. Identify what, just for comparison, the total net deposit premium. What they're proposing is eleven thousand and forty-one dollars. The same net premium in twenty twenty-one was ten thousand and eleven dollars, so it was about a thousand dollars increase. In the letter, you read through it, they talk about increases due to, um, it was about the twenty twenty-two rates and. Due to post-traumatic stress or disorder. I could think, so there is, there was a modest increase. So if I read this correctly, if we don't do anything. So I'd recommend we, we, we continue with the regular premium option. Which is number one on page two or three. As opposed to the deductible premium option. In the past years, we've always used the regular premium option when I was working on the budgets. I thought it sums up that if you don't do anything, you'll continue on.
Yeah, it, it says if you don't make a premium selection. Fifteen days before your current coverage is expiration, your coverage will automatically be renewed with your coverage selection from last year.
So if we make a decision by May twenty. And I would just touch base with Samuel. We were on the regular premium option. If the council's agreeable, we should continue that way. You can tell them the same things. Thanks, so, but if you want. You want to make a motion to stay with the regular option.
I make a motion that we continue with the regular, regular, regular premium option.
Any other comments? Sign, I know it's a favor, signify by saying aye. Last item is our. Eda introduction class funding, uh, perceived was two thousand six hundred and seventy dollars. Um, I'd like to just put a, it's a simple application into operation roundup. From the People's Energy Cooperative. Uh, to give those out quarterly. So there'll be one coming up here soon. This is just a. We pay it after, we get the funding after we pay the invoice and we submit the invoices. We've done on the other operation roundups. I wrote the last one. Pretty, very just, simple description if we're not in depth. Make a motion, we approve. Applying for an operation roundup grant with People's Energy Cooperative up to two thousand six hundred and seventy dollars. Just FYI, um, our second meeting, um, Renee sent an email out on June second. Does that work for everybody?
Jim, you're the only one I haven't heard from.
Well, um, June is a crazy month. Because there's nothing available the last two weeks at all between my schedule, the annual meeting. We're having a family reunion starts on Wednesday, last Wednesday, so. So we'll go into July.
So Ryland, can I just make a suggestion that maybe we hold off until? Like. Until we get this, all of this other stuff kind of taken care of and then the summer. And we have Gold Rush and I just feel like it's one thing that we could.
Would support that myself.
Maybe we'll be in a better.
September, you said? I agree. Okay, I'll send it out to Chris. Cause he told us that we'd take it the whole year probably. It's going to.
Well, and then, and then the other question is, we started in September, we, and. We can do whatever, but then if we start in September, we're gonna, we, we have elections. Coming up and we may have, uh, we may have new people on the, uh. On the council by January, so.
Maybe we just push it.
I, I just don't like, I don't want to.
We have new people.
That's kind of what I'm, I'm wondering if. I mean, there's three of us that aren't guaranteed to be a part of it. For twenty twenty-three and if that's the way, if, if that happens.
Perfect sense.
I hate to say it, but it is the reality.
I'm okay with holding off on it.
With waiting?
Yeah, I would be okay with waiting.
I mean, um. Yeah, the operation roundup, you have to, up to two years to use it, so there's no problem there, so. But, uh, let me talk with Chris and I'll send you guys a note back. Uh, petitions, uh, Mark, a couple of water bills here. Updates there in your packet. First one is relative to Jesse May's event center. You want to comment on that?
Yeah, so. I was gone the one day when she stopped in, but. She had picked up her water meter almost a year ago now and hadn't hooked it up yet. We were waiting for her to let us know when it was hooked up to switch her off because she was getting the seventy-five dollar flat fee. For not hooking up to the water, but having the option to. And somewhere along the way, I didn't get the message to switch her and it should have been done back in like December or so. So what I'm asking for is just to take the difference of the seventy-five dollars fee to what. Regular flat fee hookup would be and just subtract the two and take that off of her bill since. She's already getting charged for the gallons of water, so we're not missing any money there. It's just adjusting her fees to where they should have been.
So retro, you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And the dollar monster and that, I, I don't remember offhand, but.
Conversations with you about what you're coming to.
Yeah, well, she had asked if there was anything we could do since it hadn't gotten switched over. She was paying the higher fee, so I just told her that. This is what I was going to propose to council and I let her know and she said that worked for her.
She hasn't been using the water, I don't think.
She has used a few, there, yeah, her meter is working. She hasn't used a lot of water yet, but there has been water going through her. Four hundred gallons or something has gone through, so she has used some.
That was a one sixty-four. That would be forgiving.
Yeah, it's the fifty-four or something per month times the three months that should have been adjusted, yeah.
So we'll adjust it a hundred and sixty-four dollars and thirty-seven cents, it looks like.
Take that off, yeah, yep.
I will make a motion to adjust. Uh, Jesse May's water bill, um, by a hundred and sixty-four dollars and thirty-seven cents.
More comments? All's in favor, signify by saying aye. On Center Street?
Yeah, I'll talk about this one too, since I was the one that put these on. This person has come in, um, they did make one payment, um, they were in contact with me today. They were maybe going to try to pay the whole thing off. I have not heard back. I did ask him if there was any update, haven't gotten it. Um, he was going to either try to set up payment plan and or pay it off, but I guess that I haven't heard anything since before this meeting, so. I'm just looking for. Your suggestions on how to handle this one. Originally, when we went to do the tax lien for the water payments back the end of last year. We had taken him off, um, somehow when his account got set up. He got set up to the inactive account and the old. Tenant in the rental place was on the active accounts, so he was not getting his water bills. So it was kind of a whole big mess, so we were trying to straighten that out and that's why we didn't put him on the tax lien. Um, side of things, plus it wouldn't went to his. So there was a few things messed up with this and I've been trying to get the payment for it ever since, so I'm just kind of asking for your permission. Do we give him so much time and then shut it off or how do we want to handle this? So we haven't received payment since December. I haven't received payment in almost a year.
Well, that's seven hundred and sixty-three dollars and forty.
But he wasn't, but originally he wasn't receiving the bill. As far as I know, no, because it was going into the old tenants. So when you switch. Accounts, usually you'll do a finer bill on the old one and then you start the new bill on the new person and somehow the accounts were switched. So he was on the inactive one and the old tenant in this rental was on the current bill. So it took a little while to figure out what was going on with this bill.
So he knew he shouldn't be getting charged.
Yeah, he should have known that it should have been coming.
Correct, yes.
So the payment plan is to pay off the seven sixty-three?
Um, it's now actually over a thousand dollars. And I did just give one payment.
Thousand and three dollars.
And we got a fifty dollar payment, so.
When he's a rental person. Have we ever shut water off?
One of these are deals before, before we get the notice to actually go do it, so. Can't speak for Renee, but if we had some clear language that said it's two months, three months or a.
I think we definitely need to get a plan because there's a few of them that are. Perpetual non-payments for months on end.
So within our current water ordinance, do we have that spelled out at all or not?
Not.
Pay, things often.
I just said something about, I mean, in our fee schedule, we have a connection fee. Or if we disconnect, we have to pay a hundred dollars extra to get it reconnected. But I don't think there's any clear wording in there as to how many months do we go with before we shut it off and. I think if we had that, then we could take care of more of these issues and not have them come to council because we'd just say, you know what, here. You didn't pay, you're shut off until you pay.
Just the, just the house, the owner is, doesn't respond to our emails. Have you had contact with the owner of the house?
Just by written letter. Yeah, there's.
So they all go to the Center Street address, but so he owns the home?
No, this is the renter.
Okay, but have we talked to the renter or to the owner, I'm sorry? That you're, we could potentially shut the water off.
No, not yet.
I would suggest we send these letters, the one in December, the one in May, the one in April. Give the owner thirty days to. Make sure his renter pays or he's, or he pays for it or something. It's legal to do that.
Where, where he gets the water gets shut off, yeah.
I mentioned legal, that guy likes to.
I'm trying to look in your ordinance here to see, you should have a process for that that requires you to give notice. And typically there's a provision in there about renters, tenants, tenant occupied units. And you have to give, you can't just go shut people's water off. You gotta give notice. And, and I'm trying to find that. I think you have it in your code. I'm not sure.
Fifty-one.
Oh, nine, oh, ten, oh, nine, or whatever's.
Well, part of the. Instead of, yeah, I mean, I think if you, if you don't have it in your code. You should, but I'm pretty sure we just drafted this, maybe just for the sewer project, we just redrafted this and I'm. So have you checked the code for what the language says, or?
Not lately.
Okay.
I thought I did.
Yeah, I think it's in. This is wastewater. I mean, I can look through this, you can look through it, I think maybe. There's nothing the council can vote on tonight, but it's got to be addressed and there's. Certain, yeah, I have to, certain rules you have to follow, there's a lead guide on it. And if it's not in your code, you gotta amend your code to have it in there, but. Even if it's not in your code, I would just suggest to follow those rules, provide them a notice. And then a lot of times cities will just collect those with taxes and assess them, assess the unpaid charges.
Could you and Renee work with a.
Yeah.
A letter to the owner and the renter too as well?
I just can't find it, I wonder if it was in the old water code.
No, here it is. The city shall not be liable for any deficiency or failure in the supply of public utility services to consumers, whether occasion for a purpose of making repairs or connections, hold on. That doesn't, that doesn't help.
No, it's it's, this is all in the wastewater, everything I'm seeing here is wastewater. Billing payments and assessments, it's five fifty-one zero.
Oh, there we go.
Yeah, the bottom line is, you gotta just follow what's in the code, and if you don't have it, you've got to make sure it's the code, but I'm pretty sure it is. Yeah, so all bill. Non-resident owners or agents desire personal notice.
Oh, please take a look at it.
Property owners are ultimately responsible for all municipal utilities, I mean, it says that, so, I mean. You should, utility charges shall be delinquent if not paid on or before the due date.
Yeah, and then there's an assessment provision, so that's how you do it.
Ten percent penalty is added. And then it says we can forward to a collection agency.
Yeah, well, it's the. The county auditor or other question, so that's an assessment and pursuant to the assessment statute, so.
So it's in here.
I think you can have a provision to shut, I'm kind of surprised we didn't put a provision to shut off services, but. You can't just go shut off services, that's, once you provide a service like that, and you're a city, you can't do that, so don't do that till you talk to me first, but.
Same, I think we use for the process for assessments, leading up to December.
Yeah, right, okay, well, we'll talk about it, Renee, we can.
I just know other cities do that after so often, you get a letter in the mail and say, if you're not paid, then you're shut off.
Yeah, of course, yeah, in fact, the city had a plane news ask, I assigned it to a different attorney and she's redrafting their code. Because they've been doing that for years, it's just not right in their code, their code says something different. And it's got to be codified, now, other cities, I think, do it the way we're doing it here, and they just treat this as an assessment. So they charge them and they assess that, and it goes on their taxes, and it can go tax forfeited if you don't pay it eventually after a number of years, so. There's different ways to do it, we'll take a look at that.
Okay.
We'll figure it out.
I was just asking for. We need to do something, yeah.
That's the right thing to do, okay? Business personnel policy update. Other priorities going on right now.
Well, interestingly, it it's kind of gone hand in hand with what we've been doing, so. I I went through quite a bit of my notes with the personnel. Committee with the staff tonight, and so we are working on it. It's, it's just.
No problem.
So, but it is. And there's just some holes, and there's some language that is in there that. Just doesn't fit with today, so we're, we're working on it and. It's still there, so I would keep it on the agenda. Because hopefully we'll get through some of it.
Put down to a consent agenda. Make a motion, we accept the consent agenda. All in favor? Yeah, a couple, less than two hours.
You rock, that was a good meeting.
Hope to see as many of you are possible to join us next Thursday morning.